Selectmen's meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, so August 16th meeting, we'll start with department head update. We have Police Chief Jim Charver. Been incredibly busy throughout the summer. We got through the block party, which I believe was a pretty good success. The street 5K run, which I believe also was a very big success. Of course, the next thing in the hurdle is the fair. But we have our newest employee, Pilot Kennedy, which will graduate from the police academy on Friday of this week. So he'll be on the road after a short debrief. I think other than that, that's all we have.
Chief Flynn. Basically, business as usual, keep it steady. For us, fire calls are picked up, which isn't good, but we're dealing with those and the fair coming up, which hopefully things go off smooth there without a hitch. That's pretty much it.
The ambulance that needed a repair or?
That is still at the Ford graduating for a head.
A head? Okay, I thought it was still there.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I was just wondering how we were.
Yeah, it could even happen while you're getting that fired or something, like everything else.
Yep.
Colonel Towne, you like?
Yeah, just getting through the rest of the summer. Been pretty successful. Kids seem to be enjoying it. The pool's been going pretty well. We've got the water carnival coming up tomorrow. Just like burgers, dogs, some games by the pool. Some, hopefully, public, not just St. Haven, but then we have just navigating soccer season coming up. Closing of the pool. And gonna try to do a soccer tournament, I think, this fall. Something we had talked about last year, but weren't able to do. So we're gonna try to put that together. So that's in the early works. And yeah, just getting through the rest of St. Haven and on to after school. Believe it or not, we're already there.
Thank you, Eli. And Barbara, the library director who's usually here tonight, she's gotta work tonight because our children's librarian is on vacation this week. Usually works Monday nights, so she's filming her. She reported that there was nothing, really nothing substantial to report. And I'm keeping minutes, so that's why there's long pauses in between stuff. I'm not ignoring them, but. Any questions? Alright, so move on. We don't have any appointments. Review and approve minutes of the August 2nd meeting. I saw those will pack in. Department heads can leave if you want to. I know Tim wants to stick around for a few minutes because of the agenda. I know this is relevant to him, but anybody else who wants to? Thank you, Eli.
Make a motion, accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
I get a motion in a second to accept the minutes as presented for the August 2nd, 2021 Selectmen's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If we're here, so I won't vote. The ayes have it.
We have the Fire Warden Service Bill. It's actually authorization to pay the fire wardens for the permits that they have issued. We have one, two, three, four, five wardens. And Kevin Whiting issued 13 permits at $2 apiece, $26, Randy 10 at $20, Dean Flynn at 32 permits, $64. Harold, Sam White, 20 permits, $40, and Frank Brundle, three permits for $6 altogether. So you guys just have to sign at the bottom.
The state makes us split that up now. We used to get one bill per year, but the state wants it done every six months. That's why it's not really a whole lot of money yet.
The next is reimbursement for federal and state force land. It's basically land that's owned by the state and federal government. And it just shows. It's us seeking reimbursement for the land that we're not collecting taxes now. And it's usually a minimal measure what the amount usually is, but it's not an awful lot.
It'll be helpful to me if you could try to clarify or explain what the numbers are.
The amount's not on there, but I can read the acreage that we're talking about.
I'm just curious, because I'm not aware of this particular thing.
Well, and this is a first for me too, Lucy, of course. So, so yeah, it's the name of state or federal forest, the North Region Headquarters, which is 91.3 acres. We have Weekstake Park, 425 acres, and the White Mountain National Forest for 1,601 acres.
In the town of Lancaster?
In the town of Lancaster, yes. And again, there's no reimbursement amount set, so I don't know if it's just based on what they want to pay.
So there are no signatures? Thank you.
Sorry, it wasn't more. Charities are usually my go-to on that. Charities are usually my go-to on those questions. Alright, new business. So one topic we wanted to bring up, just to get some clarification, because there's been some questions, is ATVs on town roads. I think in the past, and Tim can speak to some of this as well, so interrupt me if you feel the need. In the past, it had been that every year, the ATV club would come to the town, to the select board, and ask to either keep the previous roads open from last year, or keep those open plus add other ones. I can't remember the last time they had come. It certainly hasn't been since Groton had shut down the connector to them, which was basically Baych Hill and Lost Nation. So in essence, there's no connection to anywhere in Lancaster. So you've always assumed, myself and Tim, Chief Charver, who have always assumed that the previous roads that were open for ATVs are no longer open. The state isn't even sure whether they're open or not.
I think it's been two seasons since they've been here.
Yes.
And as I recall, which could be faulty, but as I recall, it had to be voted on every year whether to open the town roads or not. And since this board hasn't taken a vote to open the roads, I would say they are not.
So if we just recap just a little bit, on the Ride the Wild program was set up and designed, and Troy, you may know more about this than anybody if you weren't part of that program. But the Ride the Wild program was set up to open roads in various towns as a connector to other towns such as Groton, which would go through Berlins, Stratford, and all of that. Bring money to the community that people would stay here and be able to ride to those other places, as much as other places could ride to us and utilize our business and such. It was never designed, to my knowledge, to everyday commute, like myself going from my house to the store for day-to-day groceries and stuff like that. It was more of a commuter. We don't have that. There's no way that we can go anywhere without that. Nobody can come into us, we can't go anywhere.
Yeah, and there's no active club as far as I know.
Not that I'm aware of.
You're correct, actually. I was in the legislature when they did that. And it was always supposed to be a connector from someplace that didn't have a trail to a trail to travel to somewhere else. It was never intended to be just a ride around town kind of thing. And obviously, when they were open, you had some people that did that, which, okay. But since we have no connectors now, I don't think we meet the RSA's to open.
And that's, we're getting a lot of questions of where can we ride? Are we gonna be in trouble if we ride on the roads? We've kind of put that answer off. We're not issuing tickets for it, but we're kind of funneling to, you can't ride the roads. There's no place to go. Unfortunately, the signage is still up that says shared route with ATVs. All the arrows are in place to indicate that they could go on it. I think, in my opinion, we need to come up with whatever the board wants to do as far as not allowing it. I think if we follow the guidelines, as you said, for Ride the Wild, we don't fit anywhere. So really, anybody could use a four-wheeler for, or UTV, or any of that stuff would be for personal use, so to speak. And that's not what that was designed for in the beginning.
Yeah, I have two comments. Given what you said, and all these signs being up, could you contact the ATV people and have them take them down?
And I will, as soon as we come up with a decision.
Right, okay. So the other thing is, I just want to corroborate what I understand the law is, which is that if there are no connectors, then the state cannot allow ATVs in Hampton Town on state roads. I don't know about local roads, but I think there are no connectors.
I think under the guidelines on that, and the character of the police, if they don't have a connector, they don't have a road.
And also, the law, as I understand it right now, is that if the town wants to open any trails, they have to have a public hearing and inform all the butters and so forth.
Not necessarily butters, but there was always an open forum where anyone that had comments could come in and comment.
But the laws changed a little bit. It used to be they could just put them in an hour and see where you have to get permission for this.
Yeah, it's always been kind of a process, because we could say we wanted them, and then it had to go to the state. And the state would say, yeah, well, you can use our roads too. At this point, for this year, we have not opened the roads. We haven't had the public hearing. My opinion is they're closed until at least next year, when if somebody wants to come in and propose certain streets, then we could entertain that. I love ATV, and I've got ATVs. I like doing it, but using the town roads at this point, I don't see a purpose. We're almost at the end of the season.
And again, as far as the police department is concerned, if they have no place to go, then they think that the roads are not, they're not designed for that. They, again, they don't have any trails to go on. The town of Lancaster doesn't have any OHRB trails, they're just snowmobile trails, which are not allowed on. The only thing they would be able to do is ride up and down the road. And you know, once that gets allowed, other things are gonna happen. So the police department, until we come, state comes up with some type of a plan for a connector trail, police department would recommend that we not have any of them.
I agree. I met with the head of the Trails Bureau, and I'm having another meeting Friday. We have a couple of towns up north like Stock and Dummer. Right now, there's two roads in those towns that are connectors to major trails that go to the North Country up towards, you know, towards Arrold and everywhere. And they have had meetings in the towns. They took it to a town vote in Stock. It was defeated by 82% to close the road. Same thing.
To close it, Troy?
Against closing it. And the one up in Dummer has now just been brought to light. They are running a new trail that is less invasive on the roads, on land that somebody donated. So they're just about done. They got their wetland permits and everything else, but I'm carrying on the woman. But long story short, I don't think there's any intention of here, because there's just, there's no connecting. The only thing that could ever happen, which won't happen in a million years, if they ever opened the trail in Randolph, you could possibly have a connectin' coming down through, but that's never gonna happen.
Just for clarification on the police department side, we have not had any issues with four-wheelers that we need to address. It's just that we're getting questions, and we don't want to be able to give whatever the board's recommendation is for the answer, as can we do a vote. We haven't had a real issue with that.
Okay, two more comments. One is about the statement that was put out by the Trails Bureau this spring, which believed the forest lands or the Forest Service, Forest Rangers, and so forth, the responsibility for policing on town roads. And which put it in your book, where the town police departments in each of those little towns is now responsible for policing on the town roads, as I understand. So that's one thing.
Which we always have that.
Right, but you've had the, you know, the forest lands, you know, wherever, anyway. They were always a part of that, and now they've been sort of pulled back and told it was up to the locals. So that's one thing. The other thing is just an opinion of mine, and that is that we talk about diversification in our cultural activities. And if you look at Coates County, a good part of it is already pretty well traveled by four-wheelers. If you go up the east side and across the top, there's a lot of four-wheeler access. And if you come down this way and then back towards Randolph, there is none. And I believe that if people are coming up, tourists are coming up here, and they want a diversity of activities, or they want a diversity of atmosphere, ambiance, you know, we in Lancaster, in the southwest corner of county, offer an alternative to Berlins. And I think it's important that we continue to reinforce that and offer that. And I even talked to a family one day who said, yeah, yeah, we love coming to Lancaster, and our kids want to go four-wheeling, so we send them up there, and we go bicycling, whatever. So I just, I'm thinking in terms of economic diversity for Coates County, I think it's really an important consideration that we keep a part of our county different, or we offer a different whole, you know, paradigm, shall we say. And I would just add that if they go back in a place in Colorado, they divide up the territory, so there's snowmobiles here, or skiers here, or whatever. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to, regardless of what sense there is about Lancaster and how four-wheeling can work here, aside from that, I think it makes a lot of sense to just keep ours. Of course, I don't like the wheelers. I, you know, nobody has to question about that. But just from a diversification, economic diversification, I think that that's something to think about. Thank you.
About the only way there's gonna be trails that connect here is if, for some reason, they open up the railroad tracks, which they've talked about, but it's not gonna happen, because they try to keep them active. Actually, I'd entertain a motion if the board so desires to come to a resolution on this, or what the board's desire is.
I make a motion if the roads are closed to ATVs.
Do you want to, until next year?
Until, number one, we have an active club in town that will maintain the signs, and maintain, it's somebody to go to. And number two, we're gonna have a connector.
So the motion is, town of Lancaster's public roads will be closed to ATVs until such time as there is an active ATV club in town and a connector trail. Is that correct?
I'll second it.
You get a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is a Conservation Commission appointment for Sam Main. He was at the last Conservation Commission meeting last Monday, where he had his letter submitted, and the Conservation Commission had recommended him to you for appointment. I believe his letter is in your packet. He has a pretty good background in environment and sustainability. Rachel Stewart, who is the chair of the Conservation Commission this year, do you have any questions for her? Is that correct?
If you have any questions, we're excited. He'll fill the last position. Yeah, he's a wildlife biologist. He's worked for Fish and Game. He's worked for the US Forest Service, so we're pretty excited to have him. Lives over on Golden Park.
That should be the only thing.
We've got a 100% vote on the board.
Wow, nice.
I make a motion that we appoint him to the Conservation Commission.
Got a motion to appoint Sam Main to the Conservation Commission. Do I have a second?
Yep, I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to appoint Sam Main to the Conservation Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Sam Main is appointed to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Rachel. The other thing for new business in your package as well, there was a letter, there was a tax credit exemption, and a letter from Tim Moore for a solar exemption. He said he just found out about Lancaster's tax exemptions for solar, and he's hoping that this could be reviewed and approved retroactively for the 2021 tax year. Said he just found out about it by the communities, from a member of his family, the communities in New Hampshire do offer those. And in doing research, he found that we do. I will tell you that over the last at least two years, whenever I issue a building permit for a solar project, which they did receive one, I include a copy of the exemption application. I don't write a long letter explaining it to them. I figure that'll be the clue for them. And because in previous years, people have been surprised that there is that exemption, so I just figured, well, it's just as easy to just include it in the application, I mean, in the permit. I don't know why he didn't get it, or if he did get it, why he didn't see it, or whatever, but.
From my understanding, there is a timeframe that we're supposed to abide by for these PA 29s?
Yeah, and he didn't reach it.
And this is not within that timeframe, I don't believe.
No, it's not.
Are there variances?
Not by RSA unless this board decides they want to not abide by the RSA. And I know if a veteran came in and wanted a veteran exemption, and it didn't come in during the time that it was supposed to, they don't get it until the following year. My personal opinion is it's not in a timely fashion, and we should invite him to, obviously, submit again in a timely and fashion, which I think is after the second tax billing until April.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to charity. Maybe this application, he did fill one out that he included with this letter, so maybe that can count for that.
For the upcoming one. But I don't want to see us to start setting a precedent where we're accepting these any time of the year. There is certain guidelines where they're supposed to come in.
And as I said, that was in his building permit package, that application, which was issued in 2020.
This is signed 7/30/21.
Well, he, yeah, I didn't sign. That's what he signed.
That's what he signed.
He got a blank copy of that application in 2020 when he got his permit. I do that with all people that get a building permit for sure.
I'd say entertain motion or whichever way.
I would say that if he missed the filing deadline, then it's missed.
Like I said, I just hate to see us to start deviating from those filings, because that opens Pandora's box every time you do something like that. Do I have a motion?
So what are you saying, Neil, that he will be taxed for that until such time that he puts the application in and gets untaxed?
Yes.
I guess I read it, the town voted not to tax solar systems, and I didn't realize that it was a formality to get untaxed. I think, I guess I am untaxed, and I guess I must have filled out the form.
Yeah, you did.
You did do a form. Because if I remember right, we had.
What I'm saying is, I kind of assumed that the town voters said, we will not tax solar systems. So there shouldn't be a formal application to untax them, should there?
Well, it's the same thing. We voted for the veteran, all the other exemptions, and so there's a formal application for that.
Right, on the veteran, I did veterans' check. I didn't realize that I had to do it in a timely fashion, because I'm in this, one after another, after another. I'm here, and then on the solar, but it just, geez, why do you have to have a timeline to put in for it if the fat people voted not to tax the solar system? Not tax solar system.
Well, just like the veteran's saying, number one, you gotta prove that it's exempt, or that's your exempt. And they also give you a timeframe to do it, so the town can set its tax rate. If it's just willy-nilly.
So Malcolm Miller, now Jason Miller should have taxed it. If the town voted not to tax solar systems, then Jason Miller should have taxed it. He shouldn't have to put in an application on it.
Is that annual? Is it required, annual?
No.
Or just a one shot?
No, it's a one shot.
This was put out in the third, before Joe Toldes, not to disturb from making solar systems.
Do you think maybe some research is required?
Some what?
Research. Clarify though.
I'll share my experience, you know, very consistent with what you just said. We put on a PB array, and we put it on, and it came out regional just after the deadline for submitting the form. And so Charity just said, you know, it won't kick in till next year, but I've got your form, I'll make sure it goes through. So to me, it was pretty straightforward. It was, I don't know if it says anything on the form about the annual filing then, but.
It's not on the form, but it is where you download this form. There is instructions that.
But that's not the point Alan was making. He's saying no tax.
It's a state form. It's a state form per state statute for exemptions. It allows the communities the opportunity, so.
So the state overrules the town?
Right, so which is why I include a copy of this in every building permit. I issue it out to tell people, if you want it, you have to fill it out. The thing is, it's pretty much a slam dunk guarantee, but you have to do just a little bit of work. It's not a huge burden.
Right, but it's a case of the state overruling the town, so whatever the town, whatever the state.
Well, the state allows the towns to take that vote to make it available. And then, if it is available, they have to follow the guidelines from the state to fill out the paperwork to get the exemptions. It goes, it is filed with all the other exemptions.
And like I said, if you, the logic behind these things and the timeframe to put them, which is after the second tax bill until April, that way the town knows how many exemptions and stuff that they have, so they can set a tax rate that's consistent. If you bring them in all year around, then you're constantly having to. If you bring them in all year around, then you're constantly having to adjust your tax rate because, well, now this is exempt, so we're not going to be bringing that in for tax dollars. At some point, we have to set our tax rate.
Right, but it would be simpler to tell Jason, just leave them alone. You never have the money, so you never have to adjust the tax rate.
So anyway, it's the law, whatever you want to do. You keep listening to people, or you can just vote basically.
Well, to me, right now, there's an RSA. If they do away with the RSA, I would agree with you. I hate paperwork, but I can tell you, I did the research on it for other purposes, and you have to meet that deadline. And my personal opinion is we need to be consistent, and as long as the RSA is enforced, we should abide by it.
Question authority.
I agree.
Leon, question authority.
Well, we can question authority.
But it's obviously a procedure that you have to go through to get that.
You're making things more complicated. The town people said, "Don't tax it," and we're taxing it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it's a procedure.
Yeah. Question authority. Question the state.
Well, we can. That's why we got Troy. He can go down to state health and raise hell.
Actually, this bill sits in my committee. I'm on science and technology.
So we wrapping this up?
I'm all set.
So Troy given us the case. Is your committee talking about this?
Yeah, we're talking away, doing away with a lot of the tax credits.
You are talking about doing away with the tax credits?
What, you just said, doing away with tax credits?
Yeah, and the rebate rates, you know, because basically, rich people can afford it, and they're the ones putting it in, and they're getting all the credit. So I have a big problem with that. I'm very public in committee by speaking that way, so...
I'll be the first one to admit it is wrong. I got a big call from the state, and I got one from the federal government on my income tax, and I got a reduction on a thing off my taxes and like that, and it is wrong because you are paying for it, you are paying for it.
And that's my problem. It's just... No, it is cost shifting.
But it does.
Well, let's talk about that in Concorde, all right?
That's in Concorde. What I need is a motion right now.
I'll make a motion for what you said.
Make a motion that he needs to comply with the timeframe?
Yep, I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second that this is not a timely application, and we will consider it in its correct time. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
All right, thank you. All right, building permits. Wait, no, no, I'm sorry. In your packet, there's the letter from DOT for our block grant A. Just list our payments were slated for fiscal, state fiscal year 2022, which is July 21 to June 22. We're slated to get $103,735.17. And it's listed to be sold out in four payments, one in July of this year, one in October, one in January of next year, one in April of next year, and it is subject to change based on funds availability and other stuff that the state, all of their revenues and everything, but that's just for your information, so you have that. Now, building permits. We have a permit for Alec Cassidy. He's looking to construct a 30-foot by 40-foot two-story single-family home on a full foundation on Buffalo Road. Couple of conditions he needs. He needs a 911 number and a driveway permit, and he needs a, to ensure he's got septic approval from BES. We have a guy, Consaletti, 20 High Street. Would like to replace an existing six-foot by six-foot deck and then construct a new landing and stair, wait, yeah, replace existing six-by-six deck, landing and stairs, and also construct a new eight-foot by eight-foot deck, meets all setbacks, and it's at 20 High Street right next to Colonel Town on the corner of High and Summer Street. It's on the Colonel Town side. 72 Portland Street, Brooke Easton's looking to construct a 24-by-32-foot pole barn. She wants to make like an outdoor kitchen, pole barn on pier. Electricity, but no plumbing. Let's watch some HGTV. David and Aleen Chaucer, looking to construct a 27-and-a-half-foot by 56-foot single-story single-family home on full foundation off of Garland Road. They also need to get a 911 number, and they need to get approval by BES, which actually I got it today, septic approval from BES. And for those ones that need those extra permits, much to this, I include, try to, pretty much all the time, for that, I include copies of the 911 number application. So there's those. We have a zoning decision. The zoning board approved a use variance for AB aggregates at Towne LeFiliere off of Industrial Park Road for his asphalt treatment plan. And that's all I have for information. We do have a non-public session slated, and I don't know how you want to run that. Well, you're going to have to come out of non-public session anyway, so...
We're going to have to. I guess it just depends on whether we're going to use a different room than this.
Well, we can go down to my office, because that way the cameras shut down. Alan can entertain the public while we're gone.
I will...
You got to tell me whether he's used to a non-public session.
I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session.
I got a script.
Per RSA 91A, semicolon, three. Is that one checked off? E, consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation which has been threatened in writing or filed against this board or any subdivision thereof or against any member thereof because of his or her membership therein until the claim or litigation has been fully adjudicated or otherwise settled. I entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we go to non-public?
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to go into non-public session? All those in favor signify by...
Roll call.
Yep. All those in favor? I am in favor.
Troy in favor?
Shane is in favor.
We'll go downstairs and come back. This is concerning the Fairpoint settlement, Alan, and it was recommended by our attorney to do that, to go in non-public session. That's what I'm doing.
I can greatly just go along it and follow the letter of the law, because no other board has thought they were...
Hope you all enjoyed that commercial break.
You stopped being ridiculous, think about it. Next time, Europe was savage. I haven't had a chance to hear this. Is this a copy? Okay, good. He usually, he usually has no problem keeping it in mind, so, but I'll look into it. I'll give a shot.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will come back into public session. The first order of business, I'll entertain a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session until legal action is complete.
The recommendation was just seal the minutes.
Just seal the minutes.
I make a motion, seal the minutes.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to seal the minutes of the non-public session? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's got to be a roll call.
Shane.
Aye.
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 I know it's...
That's the rules.
The camera's on. That's all I have.
Is...
You've been legally for 20 years, and congratulations for turning the mic.
Is there anything from the board?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Anything from the public?
Yeah, you could get some planning board members on board. We barely had enough for a quorum, right, Troy?
Yes.
The other night, pretty embarrassing for the chairman to sit up there and not have a quorum. Troy said, "Then feel," so we look at it, but, and a suggestion, and I was the zoning board chairman, and I was Troy's chairman. If we can offshore on numbers, I would canvass people that I knew on the street. I would go up to Shane and say, "We need some planning board numbers." They act like they're not a woodwork, and a lot of people don't know, or don't think enough of themselves that they'd be good, but you know who would be good. And what you got to do is canvas people, but we need some zoning board, uh, planning board numbers. You got to have a full board, and I witnessed a lot of them. I'm going to say, I don't know how to say it, irregularities, improprieties on the board the other night, and they should adopt some testing.
What were those improprieties? What were the improprieties?
Well, I don't want to get into it. Questions were asked that shouldn't have been asked, statements were made that shouldn't have been made by the chairman. I'll give an example. I brought a letter in from the Conservation Commission on statement on wetlands, and the chairman, who pulled the chairman of the Conservation Commission. Now, you guys are supposed to support your boards, and your boards are supposed to support one another. Because the chairman didn't agree with that letter, he said that the, in the Conservation Commission, this is way back, not very recently, didn't know anything, was not credible, and he shouldn't have done that. That's improper. Would you agree, Troy? You were there.
Yeah, I was there. I heard the statement. I don't know the person that he was talking about, so...
Right, but he shouldn't have made that statement. That person was the chair of the Conservation Commission. He did his job, and he did it well. His letter was very nice and to the point, and it's accurate as far as he was concerned. He addressed that issue very well, and he was not credible. He should have said, "That man, as the chair of the Conservation Commission, has the authority to sign a wetlands permit, an emergency wetland permit, to let Shane or I dig in a stream." That man has great authority, whether he is in training or not, but he has a great authority, and he shouldn't have done, that other board shouldn't have done.
Yeah, I was at that meeting as well, and I don't remember that Alan had letters. I don't remember that. He had a plant, he had a pre-application, and there was discussion about that. And I think the gentleman he's talking about is Ron Wirt, who was on the Conservation Commission at the time, I've no doubt, but Ron Wirt was an EMT and ambulance guy. We all know him, good at what he did, but he's certainly not a wetlands scientist. And I'm the one that raised the whole issue about wetlands, because I brought up a situation with the property that Alan was looking at, which nobody on the board was particularly aware of, and he said, Ron Wirt said it was okay, and I don't remember who said what, but I would have to say that Ron Wirt, whether he's only conservation or not, well-meaning citizen, but not well-versed in wetlands. So, and Alan had some other people involved in that whole discussion and debate at that time, some of whom worked for the state. Ron was not one of them, so I would just...
I'm just going to stop you because Ron's not here to defend himself. I don't think he should be mentioned by name, and that's my personal opinion.
Why didn't you mention it by name?
He was, but he was the chairman of that commission, and I would hope he did his due diligence.
He did, he did.
And we can't judge whether he did that or not.
He had been pulled by the chairman of the board.
I don't even remember if he was, but I guess I'm just saying that he's not the chairman of the Conservation Commission, and as far as I know, nobody who's ever been on any of our Conservation Committees are state wetland scientists, and the state wetland scientists are people who issue the permits, not the local Conservation Commission.
Correct.
So just to clarify, you know, there are two different things going on here. One is the state, and one is local, so we're well-meaning, maybe well-informed, and well-educated, but they don't have the legal ability to issue wetland permits as far as...
They do have the legal ability to issue a wetland permit in an emergency, don't they say?
I'm not really sure on that.
I've seen it done.
So the town can issue it without going through the state?
Ron Wirt can, in an emergency, or any Conservation Commission chair can, in an emergency.
In an emergency situation?
Then they deal with it later, if it's an issue to be...
So after the fact type of thing?
No reason to, just because you don't like the man's opinion, to pull one and settle. The other issue was, and I'm not going to mention names again there, but one member asked me a financial aspect of my occupancy rate and the other units, to put in with three more units, and that's not a proper question. Okay? You agree with that? That's not a proper question.
And this just happened the other night?
What was the question again?
The question was, what my occupancy rate was in my units. They are not there to determine whether there's a need for any of your units.
That's... I'm sorry. I will just say, I think what the chairman of the planning board did say about the letter was that the individual who wrote the letter is not a wetland scientist, so even though they can have an opinion based on some experience, they don't have the educational background to give a full assessment of it, to sign off on whether it is truly a wetlands or not. I didn't, I didn't feel it was, they really insulted the individual or not, they just didn't agree with, they didn't agree with the assumption that that is the, that is the voice, that is the power, individual to make that decision, and that's all.
Okay, that's...
Just take it forward as we're at it, but you should get some more, some press people on that board, and some more people on that board, so you've got some differences of opinions and some different, you know, views.
It's always a challenge, that's for sure.
Well, I know it is. You know it is. You're on the zoning board, and you need some time to do a fact, some time to do a city, but you better, you better go solicit with people.
And anything else?
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. I am happy to announce that I have hired and accepted the job of my old position as the land use coordinator, Robin Urban, who is currently previously employed in Northumberland as their project manager and kind of acts as their select or administrative assistant. She's going to start, I believe it's September 20th, and I think she'll be, she'll be a great asset. She's got a lot of experience in municipal government. She's got a pretty diverse background, and I think she'll fit in very nicely here. So, so excited for that. I was excited to, I wanted to wait, we offered the job last week. I was waiting for confirmation that she had at least told her current employer, and I got that just before the meeting, thankfully, so that I can announce it to everybody, so...
That's good, then. Hope she works out well.
I think she will. She's, she, we kind of the same language.
Okay, so just be careful with all this testosterone, okay?
I've worked with Robin for, I've worked with Robin a lot over the last eight years in Groveton on projects, and she goes toe-to-toe with the big boys. She's, she does very well with, whether it's the mill site or road or back. Her and I have worked closely on a lot of projects, so she's very well qualified.
There is a history in this building of women who were not treated very well, so I just want, in my...
As a man who's raised two strong women, I'd like to think that I would not allow that to happen.
Yeah, I think, times are changing, women, you know, watch out.
Now, that's all I have.
Sat on the board, hired the first female town manager, so...
And she was a good one.
What's that?
And she was a good one.
She was.
She did the best of us. She had no friends in town, she didn't owe anybody anything, and she, they did everybody the same. If it was right, it was right. If it was wrong, it was wrong. No good old boys network was ever.
Those panel?
Yep. All right, anything else? Different topic? Seeing none. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I said aye.
You did? Okay. It's unanimous then. Thank you all for coming.